Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, November 14th, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So move back, Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. The first item on the agenda this morning is under Technology Services. We have a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase software and services. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Director of Technology Services, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning. This first item that we have before you this morning is for purchasing software and services that have to do with our backup and disaster recovery functions for the upcoming new data center and new ERP and public safety software. We took in, I believe, three qualified vendors that submitted successful bids on this, and we're recommending the low bid from Adcap Network Systems of $383,229.86. We're asking if this actually should be awarded with no specific amounts or no fixed time, sorry, unit price and no fixed quantities, as the pricing is really based on the amount of data that we're using at a given time. And so, as that grows over time, we'll have the need to actually increase that as that goes forward. Happy to answer any questions if you have them?
I have just one quick question, and I'm looking at the bid comparison sheet.
Yes, ma'am.
On item number seven, the price difference between Adcap, Dell, and the other company on that one item is $32,000, but Dell is $130,000. Why is there such a discrepancy between those two bids? And it's even higher under the other company at $144,000.
That's an excellent question, and one of the reasons is that Adcap's actually supplying that this is service for the software itself. This is ongoing maintenance. Rather than taking and separating that out and putting it into our regular budget, we think it's important to give you an overall picture of what that service included in the overall bids really gives you a more true picture of the true cost of the entire service over a period of time. What Dell does is that Dell provides their own service, whereas the manufacturer is actually supplying the service under Adcap's bid. Dell provides their own service using their own technicians, and that's why there's a difference in the price for that line item.
Okay. Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? Mr. Aletta?
I'm getting ahead of myself here, and I noticed the next two items also are coming up. But this totals, I believe, if everything on this page, about $400,000, $350,000 again, which appears to be what you're going to need over time, and you add it to the other two, you're about over a million dollars or close to, if nothing else. I reviewed the budget, and I noticed for your department, there's about a million six in other. I didn't have the breakdown at the time I was looking at it. It's about 2.7, I think, for the total IT budget.
And if you're looking at our budget, this is actually not included in that particular budget. This is a capital items. This has all been lumped into a couple capital items expense account. We haven't actually sold the bonds, I guess, for this or sold the done the financing for it yet.
We set aside a half a million dollars in our capital expenditure this year to work with Clark in our transfer from our current software system to our new software system. I think Clark's been here before, once before, buying the hardware for this change. What we did is set $500,000 aside, and I think that covers the majority of this, but then we also were going to use it to, if we had to go do a lease purchase, this would be our debt service payment for that first year, to get this new software in line.
The total capital assets project, is that where it would go?
Yes, sir. That's where it would wind up going.
Okay, that whole budget for the year, $750,000, so two-thirds of that budget, then, is for strictly IT. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We set aside $500,000 of that money to go toward the transfer from one system to the new. We're on a 12-year-old system, as we are right now, and we were looking to go to a Windows-based system, and that was our first step of coming into the next budget to, you know, to adopt the rest of that budget to make that transfer take place.
It was going to be over time, we're going to be recovering some of the funds out of our annual maintenance expenses that we currently have for our current systems. Our plans are to have those systems decommissioned by three years out, and so years four and five will be recovering a significant amount of the current budgeted line items, and if you're looking at it as other, that may be in our 2026 or repair and maintenance account, which covers all of our software maintenance, our hardware maintenance, any break fixes that have to happen in a given year, those types of things. But we roughly have about $250,000 that are devoted to the current infrastructure, which will be supplanted by this new equipment and software.
Commissioner Aletta?
Yes.
If I might, this Part B, that's a different funding source. That does not, you can't, like, add all three of these together, because that one right there comes from grant funds.
That's why I said I got ahead of it, but when I see a million dollars in total, and if it's not in the IT budget and comes out of capital assets, and we only have three-quarters of a million, then basically, we're consuming all of it. So, as I said, I got ahead. Rather than ask the question repeatedly for each of the items, I thought I'd at least try to cover them at once and try to get definition of what we're looking at here. So, this one here, you're saying this particular one and the next one are part of the half a million dollars?
Actually, this one and the last one, the one in the middle, is actually a separate project.
Okay, that one, if I'm reading correctly, is that the 420 on the third one? And again, I apologize to the board for jumping ahead, but-
The third one is at 421, roughly.
Okay, and this one, then, if all these items in this one came to fruition as requested, the total's what, 350-something?
The total for-
383?
383.
So, if I add those two together, I'm at seven, almost $800,000?
Over a five-year period.
Over a five year.
We're trying to give you a true long-term projection of what the true costs are up here, right up front, so that as time goes in. We're also trying to lock these vendors into some pricing so that we can budget five years out. And five years is the projected lifespan of the hardware and this particular type, this particular software, which covers the backup and disaster recovery for the hardware.
Okay, so the main thing I'm looking for, I guess the answer is that the budget will take care of all this, even though there's a quarter of a million dollars left for everybody else in the county's capital assets, that's going to be sufficient, the $250,000 is going to be sufficient for the rest of the year for the rest of the county, I guess.
Well, my crystal ball here says, "I hope so," but we also have a contingency, if necessary, you know, in our general fund, if that has to happen. The other thing that Clark mentioned to you is, for example, right now, we may be paying $70,000 in continuing maintenance or whatever. Well, when we go into this, that $70,000 will go back to $30,000 a year, so there's additional monies available within the capital projects and some of the reductions of the maintenance is in his operational budget that'll help take care of it. So, it won't be all of it coming out of capital projects. It'll only be the minimum that we can get out of capital projects, so that we still have money left over for the rest of the year. Keep in mind, all computer needs, small equipment needs, that's funded out of our general fund, not out of our capital projects fund. We also have, we have a, we borrowed money last year for cars and stormwater issues. We've got about E911, so we do have some funds available in E91, I mean, in capital projects funds that's not part of that $750,000. So, for example, the police department came in and said, you know, "We need six new police cars." We have funding for those six new police cars in our capital projects fund that's not part of that $750,000, if that makes any sense. We borrowed $4 million. We've spent, say, $3 million. I've got a million left in cash that I'm spending, but I had a list of what I was going to buy, fire trucks, you know, for public safety needs, for things like that. So, that's where some of the money is. I understand where you're coming from, and I agree completely. $250,000 doesn't sound like a lot of money left for the year, but that's not all we got. That's just all that's funded through this particular budget.
Well, we've had people come up here since July 1st requesting certain items, which means we've been eating into that fund, too, I thought, or we will for sure.
That is correct.
And as a result, that fund is much less or is less.
Yes, sir.
And again, we're only not even halfway through the year, so my concern is, we had an extremely tough budget time to meet the numbers, and to the extent we met those numbers, I just taken a hard look at whether, in fact, we're untasked after four or five months.
Yes, well, and I guess, and to add to that, too, is that, again, we're on a system that's about 12-years-old right now, and we're getting close to the point where we're going to be forced to do either an upgrade of the current system or move to something new. And what we've chosen to do is to move to something new, which is going to create a tremendous amount of efficiencies throughout all levels of government. And that's really, we're either going to be forced into spending some money, you know, propping up and taking care of the old system, or getting into something that's going to work better for all the departments in the county.
Again, my concern is making sure that the budget we established took that into consideration, as opposed to the surprises that'll pop up. And in your particular case, when you come up here, nothing on you, but IT is expensive, although it's supposed to save us some productivity. $400,000 here, $400,000 here is a huge budget buster if it were on that basis. So, that's my concern in raising the question.
And we have taken a very comprehensive look and involved with this with our strategic plan, which we actually have a presentation, and I believe you had to be out that day. But this is just part of that, an overall strategic plan that we have initiated for the entire county and for IT operations going forward. It takes in a long-term look and strategy for the whole county.
Good.
Just as a follow-up comment, it might not be a bad idea to schedule a work session to discuss the budget issues like this, as far as the capital, because I know when we're looking at our budget, we're not always looking at the year we're in, but you're always looking a couple of years out, so that you're not caught by surprise by some of these things that come up. So, it would probably be good just to have a work session to discuss these issues. And one other follow-up question I want to, and I'm going to go back to the item number seven, because that is a three-year service plan that we had discussed. You're not paying this all out, and this year, it will be phased in over several budget cycles, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And what we did ask for the vendors to quote out, you know, what it would cost us over three years, and that's really to give us a, you know, a better way to compare the bids that came in from the different vendors. Some people wanted to do service a little more different, a little differently than others. And it gives us a way to project and budget for the three-to-five-year mark that we really need to. We don't want to get caught into a contract with a vendor who gives us a great deal upfront, but then turns around in year four and spikes our maintenance costs, you know, through the roof and catches us off-guard. And so, this is really trying, a way to guard against vendors who want to, you know, bait and switch, if you will, on those maintenance fees in the latter years of the service that we've requested.
Mr. Aletta?
So, basically, all these are service agreements in this?
Some are for service and some are for hardware, and some cover both. We have also, in all three agreements, asked that the vendors sign a master services agreement. Now, we have worked with the county attorney's office to actually write, that is really from our perspective written, that really helps protect us against some of those changes, rather than just accepting the service agreements that the vendors present to us.
I totally agree with service agreements, because at the end of three years, the equipment's old and new equipment's there, and they don't want to service it, and they'll charge you arm or leg.
Yes, sir.
But getting equipment nailed down for a three-year period, when equipment costs go down or improve, is that really functionally the best thing to do with IT, is to go ahead and have bids for three years out on hardware that, as I said, for the most part, is going to change?
Well, we believe that the life of this hardware should be at least five years. So, at least this hardware that we're purchasing today will last us for five years. Now, we may have to add to it as our needs grow over time, and one of the things that we looked at, and we'll get to this on the last item, is that we really wanted a solution that was very, as well, as flexible as we possibly could have it be, meaning that we could have it modular, that we weren't going to be locked into a specific type of technology forever, and that we could change vendors easily if we needed to, or that we could add incrementally as we needed to, without having to bite off an enormously new or a large new infrastructure. A lot of the cost in this big back office, and this is, this is very large equipment. This is enterprise-level hardware and software that, I mean, we're putting the most valuable information that the county has on this equipment. This is our police department's records management system. This is the 911 computer-aided dispatch system. This is all of your finance, your human resources information. These are the most critical functions that the county does. And so, to say that we shouldn't be taking, or, well, we have to take a long-term, but yet a very stable and a very guarded approach to what we choose to put in here, and one that we know that we're going to have to live with. Changing the software systems that we'll ride on top of this hardware infrastructure is not something that's easily done. It takes years to do. It takes years to plan for. And so, it's not something that we just willy-nilly can, you know, rip and replace over time. And so, we do have to take that three-to-five to even 10-year, you know, kind of looking into that crystal ball as best we can.
Well, you're planning, so I appreciate that. And I just, again, the questions are not to say you're doing it wrong or shouldn't. I'm just asking the questions from what I've dealt with for many years and doing that planning and the cost and increasing, decreasing in software and all the stuff you're talking about. So, I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to Adcap Network Systems for Commvault Software and Services, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a request for proposals for a criminal justice information sharing system. That's Exhibit Number Two.
Okay, this is a criminal justice system. I just want to give you a brief overview, in particular for you and for the citizens' knowledge. This is a system that we put in place that allows for information sharing amongst all of the different departments, agencies, and courts involved in the criminal justice system in Henry County. It allows for information that is put into one system, for instance, like at the police department, to automatically flow from the police department to the courts and through the entire process. Information doesn't just affect one department in the criminal justice system. It often flows through an entire series of departments. And what this will allow us to do, it was, one, it's going to allow us to replace the Metatomic system that was in place a number of years ago, but that company has ceased to support that system and has sold out for a number of legal reasons. But this will actually replace that system, and in doing so, our maintenance costs will be decreased from $73,000 per year to $32.7 per year. And so, we'll be seeing some immediate cost savings there, as well as still meeting the needs of the criminal justice system, and help reduce redundancy and duplicate efforts, et cetera, throughout this system. Happy to take any more questions about this particular. This is a software system and implementation services.
Mr. Bowman? Is there any help from the courts on this, or the DA's office, or are they putting in anything?
In terms of dollars, for this particular system, maybe not, but we do have a public safety slash CGIS grant that we have some money there to access, as well as the ongoing maintenance funds, which obviously go down over the years as well. And we know we have a group that we call the Henry County Consolidated Justice Group. We normally meet about once a month, and it's basically representatives from all the various criminal justice agencies, including all the five courts, both of the prosecuting attorney's offices, the public defender's office, all of our law enforcement, IT, financial folks are there as well. And this is, this is what this group has been working over the past about seven years, is actually how to work out the business processes in the criminal justice system to become more efficient, so that we're not, you don't have the same person typing in the same information into nine different systems, nine different times, with nine different times to make mistakes, and nine different people that are doing basically the same job.
Is the, does the grant money that you're speaking of, is it calculated in the $206,000?
That's exactly what that will be going for, the $206,000. The ongoing maintenance is a part of our normal budget and our general budget for the IT operations.
So, go ahead.
Mr. Stamey?
One of my questions is just like Mr. Bowman's, but on the 206, the initial payment of 206, does that include, will we get the $32,000 in the first year, or do we start paying the maintenance or give it right away?
That is actually, that's a great question. That is actually, will be prorated based on what they have delivered. There are 34 exchanges, data exchanges, that will be addressed in this particular project, and so, if they finish by the year's end, by July 1st, if they have finished all 34, then next year, starting next July, we'll actually have to pay the full $32.7. If they haven't completed all of that, we'll only pay for the ones that have been completed in entirety, for an entire year. And so, they'll have the whole next year to complete any that they haven't completed by July 1st, and then they would pick up the remaining, or the difference there in that maintenance for the following year. Does that answer the question?
Yes, yes. And one other question, Mr. Bush, you can answer this one for me. You know, just like Mr. Aletta was talking about, you know, when you put the 383 into 420, the next one is 421, and this, we're lower than a million bucks, at what point do you do the lease purchase? Or we have money available to pay for this stuff initially, but what point are you doing the lease purchase, and what are the terms in the lease purchase?
This whole entire cycle is going to take about 24 months to do. So, what we did is, in this year's budget and in money left over from a previous budget or two or three previous budgets, we sat down and said, "This hardware cost, the original," I think we did, what do you call it, server of memory space, more space. We've done that one already this year. Then we're coming in here with this one. These hardware costs, we have money to pay for now. It's when we get ready to actually implement the new software system, and that's a million or a little over a million dollars, that's where, when we get ready, I guess, next month, to start working on our budget, that will be plugged into that budget, so that by the time the beginning of the year rolls around, we'll be able to come back before you to buy the additional software. We are not looking to lease purchase any of this equipment we're talking about today. We have the funds available in the capital projects fund that are involved in this year's budget and money that's been left over over previous budgets. That's how we're going to fund this, these particular purchases.
But there's more upgrades coming that, with the additional million dollars coming, that will be a lease purchase available, and you don't even know the terms of that right now, do you?
No, sir.
Okay.
And that will be for the software, but it's sort of like building a building. We have to, this is the, this is the foundation. We have to put the foundation in place first before we have a place to put the software.
Mr. Aletta?
Mr. Bush, you mentioned funds left over from last year's budget. I'm trying to understand, and it's probably government accounting, but-
Okay.
-a budget is established, and what is left over is lost, I would think, unless you increase this year's budget to be greater than last year. So, when I look at $750 for capital, that would be it, whether it includes what was left over or not, I would think. Is that correct?
Our capital budget fund, and it is a capital project fund, is funded by the general fund. So, last year, let's say we used $750,000 for 2011, which ended in June. We put $750,000 over there last year for capital needs, all right? Let's say that at the end of the year, we had spent $600,000 of the $750,000. That $150,000 stays in that capital projects fund, and it may have been for software or whatever else that we didn't buy already. Also, in last year, when we put the $750,000 in, and that would have been done in July of 2010, after that, we went and borrowed, a lease purchase for $6 million or something like that, for the E911 needs and the fire trucks and police cars and things like that that we bought. So, we had that funding that we didn't have to use that $750 for, if we had put some of that in there. So, we had some excess funds left over in the capital projects fund that have to be used for capital projects. And that's where, if there was any shortfall in some of the this year's money, we would lean back on those older funds that are still sitting there.
So, the $750 this year is a transfer out of general funds to that fund. In business terms, I guess, the equity that you would of the fund itself had monies that can be used or sitting there.
That's great. There's a fund balance in that capital projects fund as well, and that's how we're actually able to pull those funds.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the RFP to Five Point Solutions, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Aletta, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase a storage area network solution, and that's Exhibit Number Three.
This particular item right here, this is basically raw hard drive space. This is the space, this is where the information physically lives. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have, but we are recommending the award be given to Dasher for the project cost of 429.27, which was the low bid. And I might add also that their product line that they've offered is actually, was actually double the requested speed and flexibility options that we had asked for. Basically, we gave minimum requirements for how fast we wanted this storage to work, how much we wanted, and how easily that it could be added to and replaced over time as we needed to do that. And they not only met those expectations, but they exceeded them by 100%, and they were the lowest bid. Happy to take any other questions there.
And then, according to the resolution, the four, years four and five maintenance of the AS400 system, because I guess those will be decommissioned, for lack of a better term, will be used to, for some of the cost associated with this.
Yes, ma'am. And keep in mind, there is going to be an overlap period where we have to run two different systems at the same time, and that's why we're really focusing on years four and five, where we can really begin to supplant the current funds that we use for maintenance on the current systems, because the current systems will not be here and operational any longer.
Any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the contract to Dasher Technologies, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we're going to move on to Board of Assessors, and we have a resolution regarding the term of office for the members of the Board of Assessors. That's Exhibit Number Four. Ms. Wiley, would you like to comment on this?
Certainly, Madam Chairman. As the memorandum states inside your agenda books, the law allows you to appoint assessor members for terms ranging from three to six years. The only limitation on that appointment is that they be staggered terms, because the law does not want to lose all of the experience at one time on this most critical board. Last year, the board had two appointments to make, and those two appointments was, at that time, the board began considering reducing the six-year term that the Board of Assessors had previously been operating under, two, three-year terms. And with the two appointments that you made last year, you all made that decision and made those two appointments for three years. The Georgia Department of Revenue requires that if you're going to do that and change those terms from six to three, then you make it across the board, applicable to all the board members. So, this resolution cleans that up and further enhances what you all decided to do last year, and it sets the entire board term for three years. Now, it does not affect any current term, so you can't limit an existing six-year term. However, when a six-year term expires, such as Mr. Chafens, who is expiring in December of- of 11, then if he is reappointed or if someone else is appointed, then that person or Mr. Chafens will serve three-year term, beginning with the new appointment. So this resolution clears that up.
Did any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this?
Only question I have, and I ask the attorney this. The way the resolution is structured, this complies with the laws and would make it okay with the state law as well as county ordinance?
Yes, sir. We will forward that, I see my policy, we'll forward this resolution to the Department of Revenue, and they will keep that on their records.
Because the way I'm reading it, if we did elect to go to three, then you would have three terms that would expire in 14. Is that correct? And then you would have two that would be expiring in 16. Is that correct?
You would have two that would be expiring in 2013, and that would be Friki and Adaway.
Okay.
And you would have two expiring in 2017, which would be Shelton and Smichael.
Well, it says that we ended in 14, according to the resolution.
Under their current terms, their current six-year terms end in 2014. So if they would be reappointed in 2014, they would expire in 2017.
Yes, I understand, but we're talking about currently. So this 12/5/2011, if you add three to it, it would be, there would be three that would expire in 2014 and two that would expire in 2013. Is that correct?
That's true.
So you do continue your staggers, okay?
We'll do three-year stagger.
In our current terms, Sam would expire this year, doesn't it?
It does, in December of this year. So add three to it, and that'd get you to the 14.
For whoever is appointed to that position.
For whoever's appointed. We're not talking about people, we're talking about positions, in terms of those positions. Okay.
So I know we had a rather lengthy discussion about this at a previous board meeting, as far as whether we wanted those terms to be six years or three years, and also if we wanted to have it more dispersed across the county so that other districts had representation on the board. As it currently stands, we have two from five, two from three, and one from District One, no representatives from four, too. And I believe Mr. Aletta made a strong case for the desire to have someone on the west side of I-75 represented on that board. You have before you a resolution for consideration. If it's something the board wants to entertain, I will look for a motion. If it's something you want to think about, we're still going to have to handle the appointment for Sam Chafens' position, which expires the 5th of December. So I will look to the board for your direction. Mr. Aletta?
I'm trying to run the numbers in my head and then probably, not fast enough, but I don't think there's any magic of six or three or whatever else. I think you probably, taking a look at the years and whatever, was wondering if it went to four, would you get a better staggering? But if the 14s and 13s, adding four is going to come out the same either way. I'm just trying to figure out a way to increase the staggering instead of having three and four, such as what we did with Commissioner Stamey, taking a two-year so that we can get everything into more lockstep instead of what we had four and two coming up in different years. You can't do anything here for 12, but what I'm getting at is, I don't know how, there might be a way to, instead of losing three in one year, which is where I think Mr. Bowman, Mr. Holder was going, that losing three in one year is a way to lose just two. And if the present position, and I'm just stating this to try to get staggering on that, is if the present, if we went to four, the 2011 would go to 2015, so that you wouldn't have all three coming up then in 17. And then, of course, when the others came up, they would go to 18 and 17 and 18, based on that. So at least you'd have a 1-2-2 versus 3-1. I'm just throwing it out, if everybody's okay with three expiring and not trying to stagger it to be 2-2-1. That's done.
Mr. Holder?
I think you're going to have a 3-2 stagger anyhow with a five-member board, regardless of when the year is. Let me inject this, because it's been six years. One of the problems that all commissioners had, and this happened many years ago, six years is beyond the term of any commissioner, because our terms are four years. So basically, someone could appoint a person, and I think probably, if the truth was known, that's the reason you didn't see any residency, district residency requirement for the tax assessor board. If you do it in four, you're still not going to run consistent with the commission terms. In three, if you cut it back to three, I think you would have a better opportunity of, regardless of who's sitting in these seats, to have some input in appointing the tax assessors. So six was long. It was beyond any term. And that's the reason that we addressed it a few years ago, to try to bring it back in line. Many of the boards required legislative action to change their terms of appointment. Some from four to two, and I know we've seen that over the years, where they have changed. But if there's a change, I think three might be the, and this is my opinion, that three might be the way to do it. Because you're going to have a, you're going to have a stagger in the term, and I think you're going to have a 3-2 or a 2-3, regardless of how you look at it.
Again, if you tried four, do four, you won't have a 3-2, you'll have a 2-2-1.
I'm sorry.
If you use four, you'll have a different stagger, you'll have a 2-2-1. That's why I was saying that, as opposed to 3-2. So if you take 13 and 14 and 11 and add four to each of those, the 11 would be 15, and then the 14 would come, 13 come up and go to 17, and the 14 would go to 18. So you have a 2-2-1, if that's important or not, versus a 3-2.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stamey?
Mr. Holder, you probably ran when some of this was going on, but don't you think the exact reason that they did the six-year term is to take the political arena out of it?
Absolutely, to take the, or to take the residency requirement out, as far as the residency, district residency requirement away from this. I certainly do. And what we're doing is trying to put that back in. And I'm not saying that, but it would lead someone to believe that that's what we're trying to put back in, is us having it, without it saying you had to be in the district. It makes you think that's the way it's going to be, because each commissioner would obviously have an appointment.
Well, you're almost tying it to a direct appointee to the term of that commissioner's, and then it becomes political in that arena.
It does. And I honestly don't think that's what the intent of the tax assessor board was. And certainly not to say that every district doesn't have someone that's capable of being a tax assessor, I'm not saying that. But I don't necessarily mean to think that all of them ought to be from one area. But that's not the purpose in this board.
If no action is taken by this board, they stay at the six-year term?
Yes, they will stay at the six-year term, because the last resolution in effect addressing this issue established them at six-year terms.
Okay. That same thought, if we, if there was a motion made to reappoint Sam Chafens today, would it be, he would go back to a six-year term?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
Question, Mr. Attorney, Ms. Wiley. If that be the case, then how did we have the option to appoint two, three-year terms two years ago?
Last year, when y'all did this, there was, you all made a determination, I think it was the board, to go to shorten those terms. We just didn't have, we never got a resolution making that across the board, blanket for every board member. We all did make that determination that y'all wanted to shorten this, shorten these terms last year. If you want to keep the six-year terms and you don't want to address this blanket resolution, then I would suggest that we would amend those resolutions on the ones from last year, and they will be six-year terms as well, to be consistent, because you can't have the inconsistent. You can't have some having three-year terms and some having six-year.
That's the reason for my question.
But the same thought with reappointing Sam, I'm just using him because he's actually the one up for reappointment or that position is going to be open in January. You're actually looking at a seat that's in one district today, and about 45 days from now is going to be in another district, correct?
In 13.
Or 12.
No, it goes into effect in 13, January 1 of 13.
But he would be in another district.
He would be in another district.
And you took the political element out of it again. Okay.
All right. Mr. Aletta?
I mentioned this earlier when we had this discussion. I'm not looking at this to be a political thing, and I keep hearing this brought up. Any appointment by anybody is going to be perceived as political. So I don't care if I make it or you make it, and I'm not really interested that I have to be the one. My argument last time was the representation of the properties west of I-75. Having somebody on a board that lived in that area, that's not for political reasons, that's just for assessing property where somebody that lives in that area knows that area much better than two people who live up in District Five. I also basically know that as much as more dense population up there, it's 50,000 people right now in that district versus, excuse me, 32,000, I think, up there versus the 50,000 again in District Two. So I'm putting all those facts back out again, as I said earlier. So I'm not trying to make it political. As I said, any appointment, in my opinion, can be perceived as political, but I think everybody in this board in the past and going forwards is going to make their appointments based on qualifications and not necessarily, not based on some political prowess.
Are there any other questions or comments pertaining to this item?
Madam Chairman, if the board desires to keep the six-year terms, then we would present a clean, clean version of this resolution, consistent with whatever y'all decide to do today.
So if we actually made a form of a motion today to?
You can either do it today, or we can bring back a resolution, a cleaner version tomorrow evening for y'all with the six-year terms.
I'm all for reducing the term. I just brought out the fact that it would stagger it more with four. To Mr. Holder's point, or I believe it was, that, you know, our terms are four years, and therefore, everyone's going to turn, if you would, during that same cycle of someplace during every commissioner's cycle. So I don't have a problem with three, I'm just merely pointing out that four, which is still less than six, but it's in keeping with the commissioner's terms, and also brings about a different rotation versus 3-2, it's 2-2-1. So I don't have a problem either one. I don't want to see this table, I just want to move on and do something about it, but I do think, I just present that to the rest of commissioners for consideration. If everybody wants three, that's fine with me.
Let me make this count as a two. And one reason I'm saying three is because we already have two that we have already determined to be on three-year terms. So that's the reason. There's no magic in the number three. There's no real magic in number four, so. But we already have two members on that board serving three-year terms, is what I'm getting at.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bowman?
Well, I think another issue to think about is with the three-year terms, it staggers it to the point of where, yes, there may be a, you know, a commissioner may be sitting in a district that it's going to happen in, but he might not be elected in that next term, and that turns it into a six-year deal as opposed to the other. And I would make a comment that Commissioner Holder brought to my attention the last time we spoke about this. I mean, you know, really, I haven't seen that big a change on it, and I'm in my fifth year. However, Commissioner Holder told me that several years ago, that everybody was from, almost from the Lucas Grove area or District One. Is that correct, Mr. Holder? So I mean, it's not, it's just not a district thing. I mean, it's a, I don't want a pointee. I made that very plain the first time, and I don't think it's a, I think the system works without it being an appointee, so. That just creates a lot more cause to us, you know, because our quote-unquote appointed, you know, Board of Assessors member, I think the three-year though does do similar to the six-year in that you may not be sitting in that seat, you know, for two terms, so therefore, it kind of takes that out of play. So that would be more, if the six-year term's not the right term, then I'd definitely be more for the three-year term, even though it does do a three and two. I don't think that's a, I don't see how that's going to be a huge issue, really.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to respond to what Commissioner Bowman said. That does, power, or whatever you want to call it, if somebody couldn't describe or define power, does shift from various parts of the county. The time that he was referring to, Wiley Brown was chairman of the Board of Assessors, James Brown was the chairman of the Hospital Authority, Howard Garden and Water Authority, Billy Carter, chairman of the Development Authority. So all of those guys, there's four major positions right there that were held, and every one of them from District One. So those things happen, and it changes as time goes on. Nothing you're going to do to change that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll look to the board for a motion of some sort, whether it's to do something with this today or to table it to a future meeting, or?
I'll put a motion out there just to see where it stands, to approve the resolution as written to make the three-year terms.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to amend those to three-year terms. Is there a second?
Say.
Okay, second by Mr. Bowman.
Mr. Holder, if he would insert, he would be willing to insert while we're doing this, go ahead and add Sam Chafens' reappointment in that same motion.
I'd rather let this motion stand on its own and come back with a subsequent motion on the other point.
Would we be able to do that back-to-back? Or do we need to include it?
It might have to be included, Commissioner Stamey, it could be.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to amend to a three-year term by Mr. Holder, and we have a second by Mr. Bowman. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries five zero. All right. Mr. Stamey, did you want to make a subsequent motion? If you do so, we're going to have to amend the agenda in order to do that.
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda to add for a reappointment. With that, I'd like to make a motion, we reappoint Sam Chafens.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda and to consider the reappointment of Sam Chafens to the tax assessor board. Is there a second?
Say.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? All opposed?
I'd like to amend the committee. Last meeting we had, I was told to go ahead and see if there was anybody in the district. I don't like the way this just went down. I was asked to go ahead and look. I've been looking and talking to people, and all of a sudden, you ran right, in my opinion, something that I don't think's appropriate. So I just express my opinion. Thank you.
Motion carries four-one, with Commissioner Aletta in opposition. At this time, we're going to move on to the approval of the October 17th and 18th regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Say.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Did anyone sign up for public comment? County manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County attorney, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, November 15th, at 6:30 PM, we have a regular board meeting. Thursday, October 24th, and Friday, November 25th, all county offices will be closed in observance of Thanksgiving. Monday, December 5th, at 9:00 AM, we have a regular meeting, and Tuesday, December 6th, the meeting has been canceled. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session in accordance with provisions of OCGA 50-14-3 and other applicable laws. A motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by?
Mr. Bowman.
Mr. Aletta, all in favor. Motion carries four-zero. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Certainly.
Motion by? Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alletta. It is lunchtime, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. We stand adjourned.